Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. I'm going to call the January 8th, 2025 Select Board Meeting to Order at 5:30 PM. We have no, do we have any change? No, no changes to the agenda. Erica, are you looking at me like? Oh, yeah. And Dr. McNabb is online tonight, so all votes will be taken by roll call. Libby, announcements?
Okay, we have a public information Zoom webinar coming up with the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement, BESI, regarding the Vineyard Wind Turbine Blade Failure. It was scheduled for January 14th. However, due to the volume of questions that BESI received, we're told around 500. They need some time to sort them through and get answers. So that session has been rescheduled to Monday, February 3rd, same time it was at 5:00 PM. And that is entirely online, and we will get some outreach out about that. The master plan update is well underway, and there are a lot of outreach activities going on. A couple of them include participation in a master plan community survey. It's open until January 24th. The survey is available online, and there's a link to it shown on the Select Board Agenda for tonight. The, there's a little, a little program called Kitchen Conversations, which involves getting a little kit from the planning office and inviting some friends over, going through the kit, and having a discussion about Nantucket's strengths and challenges and what you'd like to see in a master plan. So to learn more, you can email a staff member at PLUS, and that information is also on the town website and on the Select Board Agenda. And that's it for announcements.
Any Select Board comments or announcements? I'm going to just add to the Vineyard Wind situation because BESI received 500 questions. Obviously, a lot of them were repeats or close to one another, so I want to manage people's expectations. They will not be going through question by question at this webinar and saying, you know, Susan Jones asked this question. They're going to compile them into themes and make sure that all of the, the questions that are asked, maybe in different ways or in different wording, get answered with a comprehensive, you know, set of answers. So it won't be question by question. Obviously, with 500 questions, we'd be there for two weeks. So I just wanted to let the community know that's how that will go. Do you want to, Mike?
Can I, I'd like to thank the community for doing that, for writing and putting the questions in and, and showing how, you know, how strongly the community feels and how engaged we are. I think that was probably surprising and pretty impactful. So I'm glad that people did that, and I want to thank them.
Malcolm?
Yes, just a follow-up. Maybe I missed it, but a while back, there was some citizens that complained about the present condition of the geotubes, and I'm not sure we ever got a response back to them, or did I miss that?
So I would say we're working on how to handle that as an agenda item, potentially relative to the NOI before CONCOM and everything else that's going on with that topic.
Thank you.
Okay, follow-up. Anything else from the board? Seeing none. Follow-up on public comment. There are some follow-up answers posted for questions that were asked at our last meeting on December 18th. And I've decided to go with, rather than trying to read or decide which ones to read or, or call through them, to just announce the dates of the meetings that have newly posted a public comment response up on the, on the website. So that'll be our new sort of policy going forward on that. And now I will open for public comment for items not on the agenda. And Erica, I have two hands online. Robert Bates?
Good after, good evening. Robert Bates, retired Deputy Chief, Nantucket Fire. With the tragedy that occurred this, on January 1st of this year in New Orleans, I think that we need, as a community, to look at improving security around the events that occur here on the island. Having sawhorses across the end of Main Street during an event will do nothing should somebody decide to do something similar. Having sawhorses at Jetties Beach will do nothing. We, as a community, need to take a proactive step, and there needs to be intense security considered for these events. I understand there's a lot of things going on, but we're less than four months from our first big event, and God forbid something should happen. We would then look like fools. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline Hay, online?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Madeline Hay, I am a Coalition Member with Keep Nantucket Wild and Act for Wales. And tonight I wanted to comment on the conversation with BESI. I've spoken with several community members, and we just all really wonder, how come it's a pre-submitted question process where there's really no dialogue between the community and BESI? We, it's phenomenal that we, that 500 people participated and submitted their questions, and like you said, there are definitely probably going to be some duplicates. However, we just really feel that it would be, it would behoove the community if we could have an in-person conversation with the, some representatives from BESI. You know, democracy really thrives on dialogue, and dynamic exchange of ideas and concerns are really helpful to have between those who govern and those who are governed. So in, in the event that this webinar has gotten rescheduled, I wanted to propose the possibility of us having an actual conversation with the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement. We just think it might be a really great way to get community engagement involved, to have people speak, hear their voices, and, you know, usually it leads to the ability to shape policy and further positive action more efficiently than just having it be where they disseminate information, and we kind of sit as passive recipients rather than active participants in the, in the conversation. So that was my comment for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Madeline. Anybody in the room? Okay, so we'll close public comment. There is no new business. Next up is, we'll take, say, minutes payroll warrants and treasury warrants, unless we want to do all four with pending contracts. Pleasure, the board?
I'll move all four.
Tucker.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So those are all set. Next up is applicant introduction or review of applications for committees and boards. So Erica, did you want to take the lead there?
Sure. So you are going to be potentially filling three seats tonight. All of those seats are uncontested, so I believe we have one applicant online and one here in person to speak on their applications. But I did want to note that you can just take a vote also, you know, after, if you want to allow them to speak, to just appoint them by acclamation. So let me just say their names real quick. We've got Carolyn Bolzer for the Capital Program Committee. Carolyn is in the audience to speak on her application. We have Jessie Bell, who's online for the Real Estate Assessment Committee, and Lisa Botticelli, I don't see Lisa, for the Zoning Board of Appeals seat.
Carolyn, do you want to take a minute to introduce yourself? You, you will be appointed, but we're welcome to hear why you're interested in serving. That would be great.
Thank you. I'm Carolyn Bolzer. I wanted to apply to this committee in particular because I appreciate that it is separate from the Finance Committee. It has the opportunity to look more in a long-range manner, and I feel that that's a compliment to the important work that the Finance Committee does. And with my involvement on the Town Council Study Committee, I've become very interested in that view of things and, and followed their work and would like to be a participant in it and see if I can be of help.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Carolyn? Okay, thanks. And then Jessie, if you...
Yes, I think most of you know me, and even though I'm not working in the public realm anymore, I'm just looking to be involved in public service in some way. And I thought this committee might be the most appropriate, given my background and work history. I would have to recuse from any agenda items concerning land bank matters that I was directly and substantially involved in during my tenure there, but I don't think there will be many of those such that it would significantly interfere with my participation on the committee. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, so our option here is a motion to appoint by acclamation all three individuals to the committees they applied for. Pleasure, the board?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Don?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And with gratitude from all of us for your willingness to serve, thank you and welcome aboard.
And then can we re-advertise again for the open positions and now for the alternate seat on the ZBAs?
That'll be next.
So to that note, keep your eye out. There are still open positions. And if you haven't thought about serving and would like to consider it, please keep an eye out for those advertisements, or you can check the Boards and Committees page on the town website. Okay, public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2026 general fund budget. And I'm assuming the Finance Director?
Let me start? Start it out, yep. So just to remind the board that this is an annual public hearing, and it typically follows the town administration presentation of the budget, which was given to you all on December 11th. You had a little bit more discussion about it on December 18th at your last meeting, and now we are at the public hearing here. The Finance Director and I went to the School Committee last night and presented the budget. And we've typically held the public hearing in case there are any public comments about what they viewed or saw or heard about at the prior meetings on this. If the board has any input whatsoever into the budget, now would be a good time to mention that. Otherwise, it'll be considered endorsed. Well, actually, per the charter, you should endorse it, and then it goes to the FINCOM, and there's quite an extensive amount of analysis, review, questions, meetings with departments from there, and then to town meeting.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment or ask a question about the 2026 budget? Not seeing any. Does the board have any comments or questions? Okay, so a motion to endorse? Oh, sorry, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. By roll call, Don?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, a motion to endorse, question mark?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second.
Okay, okay. So Malcolm and Matt, by roll call, Malcolm?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And thank you for a thorough presentation that led to no questions. So, okay. Next up, town manager's report.
Just going to pull up the warrant. You all had a warrant in your packet, but as of today, there have been some changes. It's a very dynamic document, and it's still pretty rough. But I want to just take you through it from the start. And so at your, just to recap, at your last meeting, we had reviewed, I think, outline number seven or eight from what we've been reviewing almost weekly since October with regard to potential town-sponsored warrant articles. So I mentioned on the 18th that by your next meeting, this one, you would have a preliminary draft warrant document. So that, that's what this is. There are some things that still need a bit of work and some things that need your direction. So I just want to quickly run you through this, and as we go, if you have questions or comments or whatever, that would be great. And I think Town Council and a couple of associated attorneys are online because there are some things that are going to need a little input. So right off the bat, we've got this non-binding sense of the meeting question, which you base, you all basically already approved. You'll see a little bit of tracked changes in there that I made as suggestions to make it a little clearer. And that was reviewed by the Chair of the Town Council Study Committee as well as Town Council, and they both agreed with those changes. They're really quite minor, non-substantive. And then we get into Article 1. So pretty soon, these article numbers are going to either disappear or be completely nonsensical because we haven't numbered these yet. There's, it's still too many moving parts, but 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 are all standard every-year annual articles. Article 7 is the personnel article. There are a few changes in the miscellaneous compensation schedule. Those are basically market adjustments for those per diem mostly, or seasonal positions that are shown there. Those came from the HR Department. We've increased our seasonal employee compensation schedule by $2 an hour for every category for, again, market adjustment and competitive hiring. And I have a suggestion regarding the compensation schedule for elected officials, which is to increase the moderator compensation from $175 per year to at least $1,000. The $175 is almost just an insult. So if you're all in agreement with that, I would think we would want to go to at least $1,000. We don't want to get too crazy, but that 175 is silly. The town clerk salary, because that is an elected position, and it is statutorily required to be approved by town meeting, and that is in line with the other non-union staff, so that, that's an increase over last year. Article 8, 9, 10, these are all just standard articles, and the, the real actual items that we'll be voting on will be in the Finance Committee motions. Article 10 is a standalone debt exclusion for our town employee housing project at Wait Drive. And we've, we have discussed this project already at... Oh, Article 11, yeah. Sorry, what did I say? 12? Oh, 10, sorry. Pay no attention to the numbers regardless. But this one is a $14 million item, and that, again, that number will be in the FINCOM motion. But we have presented this to you at prior board meetings. If, we're happy to answer any questions, but you have heard about it before, and it has also been for the Capital Program Committee. Same with the next article, which is a supplemental appropriation for the Public Works Facility. And you'll see in the article, we have previously been having three locations potentially for this project, 188 Maticat Road, 10 Sun Island, and 1 Shad Bush. 10 Sun Island is out, basically. We are no longer focusing on that property. And 188 Maticat is really only in there as something of a fallback, but also there may be need to do temporary or other types of improvements to the existing facilities at 188 while we're trying to get approval for an actual new facility at 1 Shad Bush. Article 13, currently numbered, as you know, is appropriation for Island Home, and that is not news to you. The next articles as, currently numbered as 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28 are all annual articles that you are very familiar with. Now we're getting into a couple of other things. There was some question earlier in the development process of the warrant as to whether or not we needed an article for the community impact fee revenue from, this was a general law acceptance for short-term rental, a certain type of short-term rental revenue. And I learned late today, we do not need this article, so I'm going to take it up. Opioid settlement proceeds appropriation article, I think we do need that, and hopefully Town Council and the Finance Director are working on that one. Article 29 is kind of a placeholder, and we'll need to determine if we are going to, it's for rescinding unused borrowing authority. We may or may not have that to do, so we'll, as we proceed through the budget and warrant process, we'll, we'll know more, but we usually leave it in and then just take no action at town meeting if need be. Currently numbered 30, other post-employment benefits. 31, the senior work-off program for fiscal '26. We usually appropriate around, what is it, Brian? $25,000 for sort of seed money for that program. And that, we've established a couple of special purpose stabilization funds for town and airport employee accrued liabilities. Think we agreed, the airport was or wasn't needed? The air, the airport one can come out. They don't have a need for it this year, and I believe the town one can come out as well because same thing, maybe possibly next year. And then we have some Community Preservation Committee articles. Fiscal '26 recommendations from the CAP, from the CPC, and those will, again, be in the form of a FINCOM motion. Budget transfers for the current fiscal year. And this is a new article that wasn't in my list. It is an appropriation from the trust, from the Community Preservation, actually, I should probably say Fund, for affordable, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And Brian, I would have to have you explain this one.
Thank you. So this article would be consistent with what we've done in the past two other times. It would authorize a borrowing of up to $5 million for affordable housing. It would be the third time that the CPC has agreed to fund that and would eventually start setting aside approximately, I think we're going to set aside around $350,000. I'm going to run an interest rate scale for them to try to determine for future planning. But the Housing Director and I went to a meeting as they were going through their requests and discussed the need for some continued funding to have flexibility to continue to be able to help impact the up to 100% AMI in, in the affordable housing range. So, and as most people are aware, with that previous $5 million that we've had, we've been able to leverage some of that to help with the purchase of land and, and ultimately will be the development of hopefully some affordable apartment units on some of that land that the RFPs are out for. So this article would be the third of a borrowing, which is consistent with the other two that have been approved by town meeting.
Yeah, I would just say that CPC endorsed this.
And the thing that I would add, that, that there's a technical element here in the procurement process that if we're using CPC money on an acquisition of land, it gives us more flexibility on the acquisition side of the equation in the process. So there's a, there's a huge benefit that's not really transparent, but also that this fund is focused at the lower end of the income scale is really important. It allows deeper subsidies for lower income folks, up to 100% AMI. So the truly affordable end of the spectrum. So, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Then we have a citizen article, and I'm, I'm not even going to touch the citizen articles at this point. These are all in the process of being scheduled for FINCOM. FINCOM starts meeting next week, and they are taking some of these up beginning Tuesday, I believe. The next one is also a citizen article, and then we have zoning. Zoning is, is numerous articles in here, and actually, these have been updated. What is in, in this presentation right now has been updated, but I didn't get a chance to get it in there before your meeting, so you'll have that next week. I don't think it's tremendously different, but if we want more clarification or explanation on any of these, we should get the planning folks in here maybe next week. So that goes all the way. There's, there's a little bit of highlighting here and there because they're still working on a few things which actually might have been resolved by now. And this goes just quite a bit. Yeah, go past that.
Yeah, what is that? Well, they'll have to ask, they'll answer what that's about.
Yeah, the, the Affordable Homes Act?
Yeah, well, the open space parcels, I was wondering...
Oh, that I am not familiar with.
Yeah, I had a few, I had a few questions, but I'll wait till we have them here, or till we get, get details on it.
I'll, I'll ask if they can come next week.
Yeah, and you had an accessory drawing unit, saying no short-term rentals. I think that's a given. But I, you know, you had that in this, I think that's a good thing. So there was a few other comments, but we'll have them here.
There are some citizen article zoning in here as well, and, and planning will have ordered these into what they felt may, makes sense. So I think, Erica, in my version, we're at about page 34-ish, where the general bylaws section starts. And that starts out with a general bylaw for short-term rental citizen. And then we continue past that. That's kind of long. There's a couple of those. Then we have a town-sponsored article. It's a bylaw amendment for Article, for Chapter 19. It's, it's entitled "Finances," and it's adding and amending a revolving, adding a revolving fund and amending one of them. And the amended one is, we, we have currently a fund called Lifeguard Housing. We want to change that to Seasonal Employee Housing because we have more than lifeguards in some of our seasonal employee housing. And then we are adding a revolving fund for employee housing so that the rental payments from the housing that the town owns for year-round employees would go into this fund, and hopefully over time could be used for maintenance and repairs of those buildings. The next article we discussed over the last couple of months, it's amending the Streets and Sidewalks chapter of the town code to allow for the LED traffic control signs that, for speed purposes. And you had, you all had agreed to that. Okay, now, the article that's currently numbered 64 for car rental agencies, what's in here is the exact same bylaw, it's on the screen, from 2024, which was intended to address the issue of rental vehicle medallions. It was not voted at the 2024 annual town meeting. It was tabled. In the meantime, we've had a lot of internal discussion about this, and Town Council has prepared two potential other versions of amended, to amend this bylaw, one of which would allow peer-to-peer car sharing, and one which would, which would not. So this is a policy issue that the board should determine which one or what sort of modification of one you want to put in there. And those were separate attachments in your packet, and I think Erica has those on the screen. And I don't know if you would want to have one of the town attorneys review this, or what?
I think so. I, I'd like just sort of a comparison of the two versions and what they would mean in practice for us to talk about in terms of what our goals are policy-wise.
Okay. Is, is Brian on?
Yes.
And then the last two, I think they're the very last two pages, at the very end in our packet.
Okay.
Yeah, so if people are looking at it online, I think you can find them. They're not in the warrant. They're at the very end of the warrant, if you're looking at it. Yep.
Yes, I am here, living.
Great. Could you provide the overview that the Chair just was requesting? Just an overview of what the two articles that you prepared would do or not do?
Yeah, so I, so one of them, which has pretty much the whole Chapter 58 in there, but it's got some, you know, redline changes. That one would, would kind of remove peer-to-peer car sharing from the Chapter 58 Car Rental bylaw, which includes the, you know, medallions and stickers and that kind of thing. This, you know, these, these companies, I know Turo, T-U-R-O, is kind of the, the leading one, I understand, but there may be others. They are, you know, somewhat, somewhat new. And I know that, you know, some of the car rental companies on the island that have been there a long time are concerned about this sort of side, you know, side business. This is, I think I may have said this before at a previous meeting. This, this is kind of parallel to what happened with Uber and Lyft, where the taxi cabs were upset that, these private, you know, taxis essentially. Ultimately, the, the General Court adopted some, some statutes about that, and so that kind of takes it out of local, local regulation. kind of takes it out of local, local regulation. There are a couple of bills pending in the General Court about this peer-to-peer kinds of car sharing. Who knows when those might see the light of day, but that is going on too. So the, the one, the, the attachment that has most of the, they're pretty much all of chapter fifty-eight in it, that would say that, you know, the licensing under chapter fifty-eight would not be required for peer-to-peer car sharing. As, as part of the discussion, again, sort of parallel to when Uber and Lyft started, the Police Department and, you know, Chief Casper were concerned about if we're, if we put something on the books that says you're not allowed to do this, how are we supposed to enforce it, which I think would be extremely challenging, kind of the same thing here. So one, one option would be to just acknowledge peer-to-peer car sharing, but say that it's not required to get a chapter fifty-eight license, they aren't required to have medallions. And then the second one, because I know there was some proposal, well, how about if we had, how about if we kind of tried to regulate peer-to-peer but not sort of outside chapter fifty-eight or outside of the, how the rest of the actual car rental companies are regulated. And so I took a crack at that. That's the shorter one, which would be a sub, new subsection to chapter fifty-eight, saying if, if you're involved with peer-to-peer car sharing, let's say you're a resident and you get involved, you get on the list with these companies, and you only have one or two of your personally-owned cars, you would, you're not considered a quote, "car rental agency." If it's three or more, then really you perhaps should be regulated that way. And, and there is, the zoning bylaw now limits motor vehicle rental businesses to commercial zones. And so anyone who's renting enough of these cars to be considered a rental agency would have a problem if they're doing it out of their home. But this one would sort of create a subcategory if you only have one or two and you're only doing it as peer-to-peer car sharing, that you, you don't have to get the formal license that the agencies have to get, but you should register with the Select Board. There may be a very, I think relatively minor annual fee, just sort of for administrative purposes. And I believe the thinking was, well, it'd be nice to at least have a, have a sense of how many cars are doing this. Is this, is this creating any sort of problem that we should look at? And again, you know, enforcement may be tricky, but perhaps people who are doing this would, you know, be willing to comply with this if adopted by town meeting. So at least the town would have an idea of, you know, how many, how many cars out on the road are involved in this. Right now, I think either one of the, if either one of these was approved at town meeting, my own opinion is that the Attorney General wouldn't have a problem with it. They would approve it because their, their review is pretty much limited to, well, does this bylaw either conflict with a state statute, or is the state statute so comprehensive that it really kind of prohibits any kind of local regulation? Car rental, there's not a whole lot of statutes out there on car rental. So I think they would say, you know, we approved this, it's not inconsistent, you know, you may want to talk to your town attorney about X, Y, and Z, sort of, they do that a lot. They sort of throw out some concerns or caveats with their approval. So that's what, that's what these attempt to do. We wanted to present them to the board for, you know, just something, something to think about before the, before the warrant gets finalized.
Okay, thanks. Questions? Comments?
Yeah, the first question, does the town staff have a recommendation?
I don't think we have a specific recommendation. It's a policy issue, but I would say that enforcement is a concern, and requiring something that would mandate the registration of peer-to-peer car sharing, I think, is, is just not feasible because there's way too many people who do that, and it would be very difficult to keep track of it. Either one of these, though, probably would be reasonable to administer anyway, especially if Town Council is saying that the one that would require registration isn't really every single one. It's if you have, what is it, Brian, two or more vehicles, and it's more of a, something of a voluntary.
The way it's written, it's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The way it's written now, in this draft, is if you, if you have one or two personal vehicles and you're doing this, you're not, you're exempt from being a car rental agency. If you have three or more, then you really should be subject to the bylaw that you already have.
Just, Brian, the way this is written, if, if my husband and I each have a vehicle registered at our address, but they're in each of our names, we couldn't have another one unless there was another individual. It would be two for the address, right, as well as two for an individual?
Right. That's the way this, this draft is aimed. You know, if it's only one or two, you know, this, these businesses are pretty, pretty widespread at this point. So rather than saying you can't do this, which I think would be problematic, we thought this maybe was a middle ground, saying if you only have one or two, we're not going to make you go through the medallion process, but, but we'd like you to at least be registered with the town so we know you're out there doing this.
So there would be a registry?
Yeah. And you're saying.
Here's a question. If it's one address, does that mean, what if it's an apartment building? Is it by unit or how are we?
Yeah.
You know, so, so if it's, so that's more than one? Like, so Richmond itself, every unit Richmond could have, every unit in Richmond could have two.
But for their parking regulations as a development?
Well, I'm not worried about the, that's the whole, that's one of the problems in this, but I'm just asking if, you know, somewhere like that, or pick anywhere, any neighborhood, everyone could have two to each house. That's what we're saying is, you know, I just, all right, so that's number one. Has the airport, who came in and sort of surfaced this, or the car agencies, have any of them been consulted in this, in making these, this up right now? Have they been brought in and asked where they stand and how this would impact them?
No. We've had some inquiries, and those individuals were told to attend the meeting tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
I've got a couple of comments on this. First off, this was a, it was approved by the state as a home rule, so any changes, as you notice, have to go up there. But this is, so this isn't, so that's number one. It's, you know, this has already been approved, this isn't illegal. The way it defines a rental agency is defined by the state and by us as a person, business, or corporation engaged in the town of Nantucket in the business of renting or keeping for rent any motor vehicle. So it's basically what it says, and it even, in a further chapter, it says that you can't have a contract, like you can't rent a house and stick a car in and pretend you're not renting a car. It even has that in there, too. So we did this, you know, the town, this is one of the things I think the town was smart about when we did this, because if we didn't, we would have, at the time, I think the problem was going to be, when we looked ahead, the problem that we saw was we would turn into, oh, pick a, you know, pick a hotel, you know, Orlando or Kauai or somewhere with four or five thousand cars at the airport, which had to get on and off the island every year and which, you know, which would, you know, you get in a car in Kauai, you get off of the airport, you get in your rental car, and you get in a line of traffic around the island, and it takes hours. And so, so people were, we looked, when we were doing this, we looked ahead and said, you know, okay, we can't take it away from the businesses that already have it, but let's limit it to where it is now because this is a problem. And so what we're, what we're doing is saying, you can have a car, you know, you have a car at your house, and you can have two more and rent those. You know, when you look at the numbers, you know, this is back from the comp plan days, you know, sort of gridlock was twenty-five, thirty thousand, and it's what's happening now at that number. And so we're adding an additional two on every single house on the island if we go down this road. It's a, it is one of the, you know, it's terrible. This is like one of the worst things we could be doing. I think that there's a way to do this within, you know, we have eight that are available now. I think those eight could go into a lottery or some type. I think we could work at, you know, at clawing some back over time, but I think that we should be very careful if we haven't consulted. The other issue is there's some changes in wording in there about removing non-expiring and non-transferable, et cetera. I think those will be very problematic for the existing car rental agencies, and they will go to the State House and they will oppose it. And so I think that this is the type of thing that needs to be done cooperatively, you know, otherwise I think we're just, we're, we're setting ourselves up to have a very contentious, difficult situation. We're in a content, you know, and I, and the other part about it is, we're saying we're going to have two, what if someone has three or four? How are we going to know that? If we can't keep track of a hundred or three hundred cars now and figure it out, how are we going to do it if we open it up to everybody and say that there's three thousand of these? How are we going to know if I have two or three or, you know, no one will know. And so I just think that this needs more work, more thought. I think that this, it would be a real mistake to go this direction. I think there's a way to do it, but not this. Thank you.
Madam Chair? I don't want to interrupt board discussion about this, but just a couple of things based on what Matt just said. I think we have some very clear indications of what some of the people renting vehicles, how they view this. Number one, we have letters from current rental vehicle agencies who very clearly oppose peer-to-peer car sharing and believe it is not legal. On the other side, we are currently in a lawsuit with a peer-to-peer sharing individual who feels quite the opposite. So I don't know how we would bring together some sort of middle ground there, but I'm also not totally clear on the reference to getting state legislative approval for this. John or Brian, might you indicate that? I'm not aware that this is home rule petition material.
Yeah, I think that's correct. The, the special act, which is from nineteen eighty-nine, is actually pretty short. It authorizes the town to enact bylaws requiring annual licensing of motor vehicle rental agencies. So that, that actually is defined in your, in your bylaw, and it authorizes imposing a fee for that, as long as it's no more than a hundred dollars. It exempts motor vehicles, basically, which pay excise tax on the island. And let's see, then it just ratified a vote, apparently concerning a bylaw from nineteen eighty-eight. So, so I don't, I don't think any of the changes we're talking about here would require changing that special act. I know there are different, you know, theories out there, legal theories, about, about a municipality's authority to regulate this peer-to-peer car sharing. We don't, we don't know. I, I'm not aware of any other town in the Commonwealth or anywhere else that, that is doing that, although there probably are some. But, so I don't think we'd actually need to amend the special act. So it's really more a policy question, as Selectman Fee said, you know, do you want to, do you want to open the lid on this because there may be a lot of, a lot of issues with it from various parties.
Good. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, I have a question for, yeah, I, I have a question on that. Is, what is our expo, what is the town's exposure? As it stands now, we have seven hundred licenses that are transferable and saleable and owned by various entities. If we make any changes to that that takes those away or makes them no longer transferable or makes them non-expiring or however we want to do it, do they, can they come back and claim that we are taking something from them? We are, do they have, you know, do they have a further suit? Because right now, they are claiming that Turo is impacting their business, and the airport's claiming it's impacting its income, and they've got a, they've got an issue. If we do the opposite, are we going to have, you know, another thing that there could be an issue over? Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. I mean, you can't, you can't predict how everything would go. As a, as a general rule, with annual licenses, no matter what it's for, the court cases have said you really don't have a, kind of a property interest in that. And so if, let's just say the town changed the bylaw, the car rental agency bylaw to, you know, reduce the number of medallions or force you to turn any in that you don't actually have attached to a car, you know, can somebody make a claim that that's, you're taking something away that I had before? They could make a claim. I don't think it would be particularly strong. You know, we'd have to see, you know, we'd have, again, have to see what sort of, you know, language that we want to put forward to town meeting first and kind of hone in on that. But, but I don't, I don't think it would be a tremendous risk. I, I don't see any big red flags over the kind of changes that are being, you know, that are in, redlined on that, on the, what you have in front of you.
All right, thanks, Brian. Any other members of the board have anything? Tom?
Madam Chair, I was just, like, briefly, this is, this is a very tough issue and very complicated. And clearly in nineteen eighty-eight, no one envisioned peer-to-peer car rentals, and reminds me quite obviously of the short-term rental debate and et cetera, because Airbnb and et cetera didn't exist at that time either. I hear Matt's points. I think they are viable. I am very keen on what Libby said before about enforcement, about putting something on the books and then not being able to enforce it. And to, for, to me, that's, that's maybe the biggest part of this, and it's going to take some serious thought. I don't think we're picking one tonight. I hope, okay, good. We'll have another week or so to, to think about it, but this, this is a really tough one. I think the uniquenesses of Nantucket and our capacity, et cetera, kind of, to Matt's points, are important here.
Malcolm. Don, go ahead, and then Malcolm.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just going to somewhat add to that, that it's akin to Airbnb and also with the taxi licenses and Uber and Lyft. But then I, it's a debate between, do we do nothing and it just kind of continues on its own, or do we give a path towards some kind of legality within the town and regulation? I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm, I'm leery that we can even really specifically limit it. I would like to focus a little bit on trying, trying to figure out a way, so if these things are happening, that they're not using a lot of public parking spaces when they don't have a location for their vehicle? I mean, that's a little bit of what makes me think that having people registering and knowing that it's their car that's at their house. I don't think it should, certainly should never be two additional cars that you could have at your residence, but there, there may be some value in figuring out a path to allow car sharing of your vehicle so that when someone else is using it, you are not using it. It's just, yeah, it needs a lot of thought. It's very complicated.
Malcolm?
No, I think, I think it's all been said. All the issues have already been expressed. We, we just have to find a way to limit cars on this island. It's just, the car, the island is not designed for the number of cars that we presently have. I don't know what the answer is, so I have to think about it. Thank you.
So, so I'm going to say a couple of things, Matt, and then you can follow up. So I think to Don's point, which is, we have no idea how many people are doing peer-to-peer at this point in time, how many people are acquiring new vehicles to do so or using their own vehicles. So a path to knowing more, getting more information about the market, to me, is valuable. I have, I sort of have a third idea, which is, which sort of came out of
I have, I sort of have a third idea, which is, which sort of came out of some of the discussions around the, the firm that filed suit, which is, you know, in 1988, the Select Board imagined a maximum number of rental cars on Nantucket. We're not there yet, and there's unused capacity in that number. I'd like to find a way to shift the unused capacity of rental car medallions to peer-to-peer rented vehicles by somehow getting back those medallions and then having a system to allocate them to people who are doing peer-to-peer and require them to get a medallion. And that way, we know who they are, they have a medallion on the car, so when, when police and fire and other people see that a peer-to-peer vehicle is out in the community, that you know that's what it is. Obviously, I could be driving it or I could be renting it, but at least the fact that that vehicle is used in this purpose and has a medallion to do so makes it identifiable and we quantify the number if they're compliant with that kind of system. That's where I'd like to go. And then we would still be under that proposed maximum over time that was contemplated back then.
Right, and I think, when I was saying, I think there is a way to do it. I think something going that direction is a way to do it, and it isn't opening the door to, you know, to encourage 1,000 or 2,000 more. If we can do that, that would be something that would start to make sense. If we want to know how many do it, if, as soon as we open up a lottery for eight, you know, eight licenses or 50, everyone that's doing it is going to apply. So we're going to overnight know how many are doing it. So I mean, that's kind of, you know, that would be pretty easy. And I think the other part about this is it's, there are, there are problems here. And we've gotten letters from neighborhoods who have these parked in their neighborhoods, and one leaves and another one comes in. I had a conversation with a, one of the car rental agencies, and they said they hardly get any calls from some of the hotels and inns anymore because the employees there are doing it and they're parking on the street and the people walk out and there it is. And so this is already, like, these are businesses and this is, you know, this is happening. There are many little businesses all around the island, and I think that this is different than Uber and Lyft because, you know, it's different than the rental car, the home, the short-term rental thing because, you know, with Uber and, with Uber and Lyft, they were, it's different, I'm sorry, I'm messing, I'm mixing my words up, I'm getting old. But there's, there's a difference. These are not allowed. We have a law in place that says, you know, what a rental agency is. These fit that definition to a T. So the difference that we have is with, with the Uber and Lyft thing, we didn't have a thing that says you're not allowed. You know, we didn't have that. We do here. And so I just think that we have to find something that makes sense for all of us. One of the things I've been thinking a lot about is we are, Nantucket is successful because we aren't the mainland, we're different. We all live out here because we're different and we, and the more we protect the things that make us different, the better we do. We have an economic advantage, economic advantage from that. And the more that we make ourselves, you know, like off-island, the more traffic we have, you know, an hour or two hours to get to the airport, eventually, you know, we degrade what's, what's out here and it's, we will, we slowly, you know, the pressures for individuals to make a little bit of money is slowly take, is slowly degrading what's out here. And I think we have to be very careful of it. The more that we do that keeps us different, the better off we are. If we become Kauai or Orlando and have 1,000 cars at the airport or 4,000, or we have 1,000 of these, you know, in driveways and tucked in every corner that they can be, we are just going to be hurting ourselves. And, and I think that's what, you know, that's, our forebears were very smart when they did this. They looked ahead and they did something really smart by limiting the number. You know, they avoided some real problems, and I think that we will, you know, we would regret it. If we loosen this up, we would regret it. So I hope that we do something that, you know, keeps the number at 700 or under and finds a way, you know, work with the existing people and get the ones back that aren't being used. I got, there's got to be a way to do both, so.
All right. Now, I'm going to, Malcolm, if you want to add something, and then there's a couple of hands up online.
I just, I just questioned, Madam Chair, is the, the process of getting the medallions back? What, what would be that process? That, to me, seems like the next step, the easiest thing to do, or maybe that, what we should do.
Mr. Riley, is there, is there language that we could look at next week in terms of amending the bylaw to allow for that to happen? Brian, you're muted, just in case you're speaking.
Sorry about that. Now I'm on. I think there's a little bit of that language in there now, but I can, I know Amy Baxter had some, you know, feelings about that, wanting to prevent, you know, a, an agency that's sitting on, you know, X number of medallions and only using 3/4 of them or something, making those available. So we can certainly try to put in some more of that and, and see where the conversation goes then. Can definitely work on that. Is that next Wednesday?
Yeah. So, so to me, that levels the playing field between the car rental agencies and the peer-to-peer folks that, that they're operating in the same playing field, which is they are, they have to get a medallion, they have to be registered, and we can track them, and they have to renew, and there would be a system for allocating them in the same way we do with medallions that become available. And I think, I mean, in my mind, it's a bit like the town peer lottery where, but, but that, that once you get it, and then if you don't use it, if you don't apply it to a car in a given year or use it, you have to relinquish it. That's, I think that's the part, we need a standard by which if you have not come and, and gotten your medallion and given the, the registration of the vehicle that you're using it on in a given year, you know, you have to give it up and go back into the waiting list or the lottery or whatever system we devise.
Can I just, if we, if we do it by lottery, I would just want to see that if any one person or entity has more than one, which, you know, essentially they're probably parking at their own home, then they become a business and it's, they're required to have a commercial location to park those vehicles, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think these are all elements of, of what we would want to put in a system like that. Libby, did you want to add something?
I was just going to mention that, again, at the 2024 Annual Town Meeting, the article that we had in there essentially addresses the disposition of the rental vehicle medallions and indicates, I thought fairly clearly that if the town, I'm just going to read what was the amended language, "If the town obtains information suggesting that a rental agency is holding one or more rental vehicle medallions that are not in use, the Select Board may conduct a hearing on the issue after providing written notice to the agency with a minimum seven days' advance notice of said hearing. After providing a hearing, the Select Board may take such action as it deems necessary and appropriate, including but not limited to a suspension or revocation of one or more medallions. Any revoked medallions may be issued by the Select Board to another agency pursuant to Section 58-3 and any policy or regulation for awarding the RVMs adopted by the Select Board." So there was kind of a process already laid out.
So to me, it's, it's melding that into reaffirming that peer-to-peer is a car rental and requires a medallion. And, I mean, that's the direction that I would like to go, because then we keep under that smart decision.
Yeah.
But I'm going to go online for, to Stephen Cohen. Hi, Stephen. Long time, no talk.
Yeah, it's great to be, thank you, great to be here. I just want to let everyone know I'm doing really great, and I appreciate all the great notes that I got from the town, especially Matt. Yours was hilarious. You know what you said, and it was, it was really funny. And I just want to say that I appreciate that the town wants to look at this issue, and I represent Turo and about 150 local residents who use Turo. And, you know, I, I think that the, the thinking about this is not factually correct. I think it's based on some assumptions, and if we had more facts, you might think differently about it. So first of all, I would say it probably does require a home rule petition, because as Brian said, that Act exempts cars that pay excise tax, and car rental agencies don't pay sales tax or excise tax, but local people who have residential vehicles that they peer-to-peer car share are, are paying sales tax and excise tax. The other thing is that, you know, the, this is really one of the only ways that Nantucket residents can make extra money for the high cost of living here in a passive way. You know, there's lots of people that have two jobs or three jobs, but this is a good way to make passive money and is family-friendly in that way, as opposed to the, the big companies, the big national companies that own most of the licenses. I don't really think it's Nantucket's job to protect them or their businesses from competition. But also, you know, this, the idea that the 700 is not being used and is therefore limiting the number of cars being brought or on Nantucket is, is 100% wrong. The car rental companies are keeping 100 to 200 licenses in their pocket or medallions in their pocket as a way to drive up pricing, but the reality is anybody who wants a car either brings one over or rents one and brings it over. If we had more peer-to-peer car sharing, you'd actually have a lot less car rentals coming over from Providence or Boston or the Cape, which, you know, the steamship could easily confirm that there's hundreds of cars that come over all the time, and peer-to-peer car sharing would eliminate all of those car rentals because those cars sit, sit on the island. You know, there's just a lot of good reasons why peer-to-peer car sharing should be encouraged in the same way that Uber and Lyft is different than taxi medallions, but also has really helped the island in a lot of ways, helped people make extra money, helped us fill a need that we had, and I think that peer-to-peer car sharing does that. I do think that the town should actually take the position of exempting peer-to-peer car sharing from the auto rental bylaw, and if it wants to, it should create a separate bylaw for peer-to-peer car sharing. And at this point, I think all you should do is require registration for some fee and then a sticker on the car that goes with that so we know, you know, who signed up for what. And at this point, just track what's going on, and if there's a problem with parking, we can address it. If there's a problem with whatever, we can address it. But as far as I know, the town has no actual problem with this. You know, there, there's parking problems all over the place, and I don't know that this is, is changing them, and even if you didn't have peer-to-peer car sharing, you're still having people who are renting these cars parking in the same place. If someone rents a car and brings it from off-island, they're going to park in the same place regardless. The, the idea of registering and collecting a fee and keeping track of it and knowing who owns the cars and it's knowing that they have insurance is a good idea, but for now, I think that's, that's all the town should do, because making these things, car rentals, is a, I think, a, a decision that we would regret as a community when we should be encouraging this business, but also keeping an eye on it and, and controlling anything that gets out of, out of control. But at moment, at the moment, I don't think there really is anything, and I don't think there are enough complaints about it in order to spend the, the time, you know, in order for the town to do anything more than licensing and, you know, have stickers, it would require a lot of staffing and time and energy and money that I don't see in the list of municipal burdens, how this really has reached the list of creating complications for town administration yet. I don't even know what department would do it, you know? We're going to have the police department managing this? Seems like a poor use of their time. So that's what I would encourage is having, eliminating, eliminating peer-to-peer car rental and requiring permits and just see how it goes from there.
Okay. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
I, I think there's, there's almost like three categories here. There's the, there's me, I own my car, I occasionally rent it out to someone. There's people who are acquiring extra vehicles that they don't drive themselves and they're renting them out through peer-to-peer. Maybe four categories, one or two of them. And then there's people who have four or five and maybe are actually running a rental car business. The question is, how do we identify who's doing what and figure out what category they fall in? And I think that's what the bylaw really needs to do, is give us the ability to do that. So that's my last statement tonight. Obviously, we're not going to answer this tonight, so what would the, what would the board want after following this discussion from what we have in front of us now? Anybody?
I'd, I'd like us to find some way to keep it within the cap, you know, personally. I think we should keep it in the cap, and that's 700, and we'll have to track 700. I think if we go down the path of, you know, oh, everyone can have one, or we aren't going to regulate it at all, I think that we, you know, the problems that we've already been identified will increase. You know, like, three summers ago or so, I saw this and I said, this isn't legal, and I sent some info about it. The next year, I, I harped a little more, and every year it's, and then last year, I harped a little more about it. Every year, it's gotten a little worse on some of the, some of the neighborhoods and some of the problems that we've had with it have increased. They haven't gone away, they're getting worse. You know, and so I think that, you know, we have limited numbers of roads, we have limited space. I think that we make, it's a real mistake to think that we can do this and it's going to help things. So, anyway.
Malcolm?
I just want to find a comment. I think that 700 is a number that was determined many, many years ago when the number of houses, the number of people, the number of cars was very different than today. So I'm not even sure 700 is, is the right number. But in any event, I, I think we should think about that. I think we should think about getting, getting the medallions back and, I think Steve's suggestion too of, I know, I have to think about that, of just targeting or tagging the personal rentals.
Okay.
Let's see what happens next week.
Okay. I have a question for Brian. You had mentioned that the home rule, that the, the original legislation capped the fee at $100?
Yes, I can read it to you. So it authorized, excuse me, authorized enacting a bylaw requiring annual licensing for motor vehicle rental agencies, and the bylaw can also have the payment of, payment of fees for such licenses not exceeding $100 per vehicle.
Okay, so.
And then it, it has an exemption for cars that are, that pay local excise tax, exemption from the fee, not from the licensing.
Yeah, so, so that was my question. The exemption really is from paying the fee, not from needing a license.
Correct.
So, okay, so I think, I think Matt Peel hasn't spoken yet, I'm going to let him speak for a minute, but, but before that, Brian, I think what I would want to know is, there's that question, and then, you know, to get confirmation about the question of that exit, making sure that, that individual cars aren't exempt and allowable, as Mr. Cohen seemed, seemed to suggest in his comments. And, and then, Mr. Peel?
Thank you, Brooke. Yeah, I just wanted to agree with, like, what Tom said, you know, this issue reminds me a lot of the STR issue. And with that, I also think, you know, it's a big enough issue and it does affect, and I, I agree with a lot of things that Stephen said, as far as, you know, it's definitely a way for families to make money on this island, but at the same time, I think there, like what Matt said, there needs to be a limit, and I think traffic's out of control. In my own opinion, I think commercial is a bigger problem. I mean, you see more vans on this island than, than Jeeps nowadays. But with that, I think this is a big enough issue and needs enough time to think about that. Maybe I would encourage the board, if you have enough time in the next couple of weeks, to make this its own agenda item and allow for public comment and allow people to bring ideas, because a lot like the STR issues, we're not the only towns that deal with this. And so I'm sure there's a lot of other towns that people can bring examples from, and, you know, you could build something, build an article that's, that's a very solid middle ground. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Matt. I actually, Stephen, I'm not going to take any more comment tonight because we spent a fair amount of time on this and we're not going to make a decision tonight. But I do think it's worthy of a, of a more broadly advertised, you know, and I think Matt's point about having it as an agenda item or specified under the warrant article discussion for next week. And that Brian Riley, you could come back and maybe, you know, sort of suss out some of the things we've thrown at you tonight a little bit further and encourage folks who have a vested interest in this to come next week. I'd love to hear from individuals who are doing this to make ends meet and hear their perspective directly as well. So I think that's likely what we'll do is, is call this out specifically on next week's agenda and encourage the public to come and discuss it in greater detail. So thanks, everybody. Interesting dialogue. Appreciate it. Moving on. Libby?
Okay, after this, we've got a placeholder for a potential bylaw amendment for e-bike regulation. And I communicated with the town council today about the status of that. That's underway. I guess we'll see what we get shortly. Outdoor lighting bylaw amendments. This is in progress with some departments working on it. But it may or may not be ready for you for the 2025 annual. It may be a 2025 special town meeting, potential item. I'm kind of waiting to hear about that. The next article we've, have discussed already, it's a bylaw amendment from CONCOM to make the wetlands bylaw consistent with regulations that they have fairly recently adopted. And then we have citizen articles, couple citizens, several citizen articles. I'm just going to skim through those. They are zoning and sewer district and other items. And those might move around in order depending on how planning makes it recommended. That goes through, okay. With the article that's currently numbered 68, which is what it was at 2024's annual town meetings on page 52. Thank you. This is real estate lease license of Baxter Road property for erosion control. And what's in the, on the screen here is exactly what was in the warrant last year. It wasn't acted upon because the Conservation Commission had not yet ruled on the notice of intent for this coastal erosion project on Baxter Road. And now they are getting closer. Our sustainability program manager, Vince Murphy, is here. He probably could give us a little update if needed. But I guess this is, this is, needs to be a board decision as to keeping it in. There was a request from Mr. Cohen to revise the language a little bit. Mr. Pucci, Attorney Pucci from Town Council's office reviewed that request and has a response there. Didn't seem, in his opinion, as though that language was needed. But I would let Vince and George maybe go over any questions that you might have about this article and keeping it in order.
Yeah. George, is there anything you specifically want to update us on? Or Vince, or just go to questions?
Good evening. First of all, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is George Pucci from KP Law. I'm happy to defer to Vince to give you a status update. The, the only comment I would make is they are looking like they're getting toward the end of their hearing on the SBPF proposed expansion project that the town is a partner with SBPF on, under the notice of intent that went to the Conservation Commission. So in the event of an approval of that project, before the select board were to enter into a lease or license for the town-owned property in that project area, you would need town meeting approval for that. Vicky Marsh had drafted the article that's before you tonight that was tabled from last year. And she wrote it from the real estate perspective to cover town land in that, in the contemplated project area, which covers all the inclusive addresses on Baxter Road to cover that area. So if, if they go forward with permitting for the project and you do as SBPF's partner want to proceed with that project this year, you know, my recommendation would be definitely to keep a warrant article on for this annual town meeting coming up. Even if you ended up, you know, revising it in, in the final warrant, you definitely would want to have this, you know, hopefully approved by town meeting in the event of permitting from the Conservation Commission so that the project can proceed as permitted.
Okay. Thanks, George. Vince, did you want to add something?
Extremely briefly, Vince Murphy, National Resources Department and the town's representative presenting this to the Conservation Commission. You can, you might remember back in October 2022, we looked at partnering with SBPF for the notice of intent project. And that's what's been going on. That's been in hearings since January of 2024. And the next one is actually January 15th, 10:00 AM in the morning, right in this room. So there's, it's an ongoing thing, but we're very close to the end of this. A very good-looking draft, positive order that I think should be concluded by the commission relatively quickly, relatively soon in the next one or two or few number of hearings anyway. That's for the geotube expansion type project that goes from 41 to 119 Baxter Road as indicated in this warrant article. Part of Stephen Cohen's request is based on the fact that there's a secondary project for coir logs. That's something that the town and the select board are not partnered on. It's a secondary project. It just covers the same area. It's within this area from 41 to 119. It specifically covers 59 to 83 Baxter Road. So it's a core part, it's a central part for a different structure type. So there are some Wetland Protection Act questions about using different structure types, but it kind of comes down to, well, what's the best to protect the whole area? And having a competing project of sorts that SBPF are pursuing alone, the town isn't partnering on for the coir project, that's the kind of question. And I don't know how to address that, really. I haven't worked with SBPF on that project. I've followed it, I've watched how it progresses, but it's, it's a separate and independent project.
Questions from the board? I certainly have questions.
Yeah, go. I, I think I have more, I think I'm more confused after, but I'll let you ask.
So, so it sounds as though there's a project that includes that middle section that's a joint application. And then there's a separate, is it kind of like, if we don't get that, we're trying for this kind of? As a backup plan kind of situation?
I can speak to SBPF's reason why they wanted to go for the coir logs. They've had the coir logs in this area for the better part of, or 20 years or more. And under a different licensing before there was the current bylaw from 2014. Those coir logs were essentially completely destroyed in December 22 and in, sorry, December 23. And in January 2024, there was three storms in a week, on January 7th, 10th, and 13th, that decimated them. Though the coir logs are gone. But it, it then fell outside of maintenance that it couldn't just reconstruct the coir logs because it, it wasn't maintenance, it was a brand-new structure. Now, they need, they wanted the coir logs back, hopefully for this winter, which is never going to hap, not going to happen now. So they've continued to pursue it. So it's become a kind of, I hate to say it, a kind of a competitor to the geotube project in a different, in a, in a part in the center of it. So imagine from 114, sorry, from 41 to 119, Baxter Road would be the geotube project, but it would be in five reaches in different phases over time. But then in the center of that, from 59 Baxter to 83 Baxter, where the geotube, where the coir logs used to be, that's what they want back. But it now presents issues up against the geotube project.
Okay. And then a question for Mr. Pucci. This language as it's written, should both permits be issued by the CONCOM? Would this language cover the, a license for either or both of those projects?
Correct, but it would still be up to the select board if it wants to support that other project. And just following up on what Vince said in an effort to further clarify it, and I hope I don't further confuse it. The, the geotube expansion project that the, the select board right now on behalf of the town is of, is an actual co-applicant with SBPF, that covers the entire project area of 41 to 119 Baxter Road. The, the core project that Vince referred to is within that project area, 59 to 83 Baxter Road. The warrant article that Vicky had prepared for you covers the entire town-owned parcels in the entire potential project area of 41 to 119 Baxter Road. So that article, you know, that, if, if that was approved by town meeting, that would cover the project that's within the expansion project. And again, you are not formally a partner on that project within the expansion project. So, you know, the status of that is a little bit unclear. And I, I would say, in, in terms of the potential for town meeting approval, I'm sure this wouldn't be controversial to say to the select board in public, which I'm happy to do as I'm doing now. You know, the, the, a compelling argument in favor of town meeting approval of the warrant article would be that it's you entering into a lease or license for a project that has been approved and conditioned by the Conservation Commission, which is the commission, you know, with expertise and the jurisdiction over the issues at question. So hopefully that would provide a compelling basis for why this is an environmentally sound project and something that the town wants to pursue. If it ends up that it's confused as to exactly what project it is that they're looking at or the scope of the conditions that have been approved by the Conservation Commission, that can present a problem, as you know, for, you know, passing a warrant article or getting it voted at town meeting. Because when confusion arises, it can often lead to something being voted down. So, you know, without getting into the policy discussion on it, it, it would be good to know in advance what the select board, what exactly the select board is looking at for the license or the lease of the town-owned land area. Right now, again, you're the partner with SBPF on the expansion project, which is intended to improve, you know, issues that had occurred in the past. It's, it's intended to resolve enforcement issues concerning the prior structure, you know, be properly conditioned for the future, all those types of considerations. And, and that's the only project right now that you are a, a partner with SBPF on.
So this is a general permission for us to do either or, to issue licenses. But it's at our discretion to decide whether we issue a license for the joint project or, or, and not issue one for a, I hate that word. The log project should CONCOM, for some reason, issue both. I don't know. So however, we could also decide to amend this language to restrict it to the joint NOI project? To narrow the scope?
Right. That would be fine if, if that was necessary. Again, it would be better to, to not, you know, have it unclear that you, you do have to end up conditioning it that way. But definitely that would be within the scope of this article as presented to you. If you wanted to further clarify to town meeting, who's going to be voting on it, exactly what it is that town meeting is authorizing you to do.
Okay. That's helpful. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Does the 59 to 83, does the core, is that those logs, do they require a town meeting vote? So they're going to, they need, and they need, so they need a town meeting vote and they need us. And that's a, is that a majority or a vote?
Right.
Okay. So that, that, so that's one number, that's.
And Matt, I, and through you, Madam Chair, you know, that part applies regardless. You know, your chapter 67, you know, the moratorium sub-paragraphs A, B, C, and D, those aren't really the ones that are relevant. It, it is sub-paragraph E, which is quite broad. Any type of licensing or leasing for town-owned coastal land for erosion control protection purposes shall be subject to town meeting approval. So it doesn't matter if 30 years ago there was a core project there. The fact is, you would be, you know, again, you're authorizing the use of town-owned land for a coastal engineering project, whether that's core, logs, sandbags, geotubes, or whatever it is. So, you know, in my opinion, you would, you would need town meeting approval to do a license for either of these projects.
Okay. There's a comment on that, please, is, I think that people may be more willing to vote for that than the, you know, than geotubes. Just, you know, philosophically, a good amount of people. Is there any, this is for Vince, is there anything that was, that, you know, in the CONCOM deliberations, is there anything in, that's not kind of under their purview that they are wanting the select board to address? Or is there anything that you think the select board needs to address that they didn't?
I could.
During a license negotiation?
That's a good question. I don't think I can answer, but I can clarify something else just a little bit. You might remember in August, we had a big discussion about Reach 1 going first. And Reach 1 is from, is like the area with the biggest need. It's from 107 to 119 Baxter Road. And that would be the area that's in the biggest need, it's the most sheer, it's the most erosion houses with the most risk up in that very north end. That would mean that if we did coir logs instead of geotubes, that area gets nothing because the coir stops at 83. It doesn't go far enough north. That's the big issue here of sorts, that it is only restricted to where the coir logs used to be. And that's, you know, 59 to 83. The whole north end would be unprotected. The existing geotube footprint will be unprotected if it, that have to, if the, if we got voted down and would end up having to remove the existing geotubes. So if there's a preference at town meeting for coir logs, the existing geotubes go away, the whole north end of the Baxter is unprotected. And that's kind of why I'm making such a big deal and why we have such a big push for geotubes. And this is the issue why if two things go to town meeting and there's a preference for coir, north end is gone.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand that. That's, that's that perspective. I think that this, I think town meeting, this is going to be very, you know, unless there's a ton of work that's done, politically, this is going to be a very difficult vote. There's a lot of people who are upset that the sand hasn't been put on over the years and that, you know, so that's, so there's, and some other issues. So the, one of the questions is, in the, in the CONCOM decision they're going to render, how are they going to handle and guarantee that sand will be on in the future? Or is that something we're going to have to do through the, through the licensing? Because if that isn't sorted and, and 100% guaranteed at town meeting, this is dead in the water.
Agreed. So the way that this has been handled is when we did the MOU with this three years ago at this point, there was a part in that that said that all the historic sand issues are effectively SBPF's, not the town's. So we're just helping them getting this permit, just to, and working with them as a partner to get this permit for the geotubes so that that resolves the historic issues. What SBPF have put forward as a proposal, they have a sand makeup plan that is in front of CONCOM. They put that forward alone. That town isn't involved in that makeup plan. We looked at it, we agreed with the concepts in it, but it was SBPF that submitted it. So that's in there. There is a makeup plan in there. The people will fight about the numbers that are in it, but that's a separate issue for the commission to figure out. But there is a makeup plan.
Right. But let's say we have a makeup plan and, and what guarantee is, and it, it says they need 100, you know, 100 buckets of sand that year. And they decide they don't want to put 100 buckets on that year. How do we guarantee that those 100 buckets get put on?
Well, the town's big stick and the part that would have to be part of the license as much as anything would be the escrow account. And we've discussed this at the commission. You have to have an escrow account. You have to have an escrow account in place to cover the removal of whatever structure SBPF put on the ground with the permits. So that if they don't follow it and they fail again, we just say, right, activate the escrow account, remove everything. So they either follow it or they're in trouble this time.
Well, is there any discussion, that's removal. Is there any discussion of we want, you know, removal money in a year or two years worth of sand, money for two years of the sand? This is going to be astronomically expensive, you know, to put sand on this thing at any level, at the level, you know, that 15 cubic feet or at half of that or somewhere in between, it's going to be a lot. So is there any, has there been any discussion of, you know, having a year or two years worth? And if the, you know, if it isn't put on, then we put it on and then we start going into step two. Because as you know, removal is not going to be instantaneous, it's going to be a multiple year deal and it's going to be expensive too. So are they dealing with all those issues?
The commission, the way they phrased it, they have said that they, SBPF must have an escrow with the town. And that's what it does, and just leaves it at that. Then that would carry forward in the separate part, the license. So that once we come to, if this is approved at town meeting and you come to the terms of the license, the Select Board gets to decide that in the terms of the license about how much money we need it for the removal. So you.
Yeah, my suggestion, then those issues need to be sorted before we go to town meeting. Because if those are not understood, then this is not going to pass. You know, the argument against this is just too strong.
Within Natural Resources Department and with Arcadis, who are also advising the town on this as we're going through this notice of intent hearing, we've looked at those issues and what might end up being parts of the structure of the license agreement. So we have a framework of what might come before the Select Board at a point later.
I should add, I should add on that too, if you don't mind. Libby has also authorized Vince and I to work together to attempt to come up with an amended memorandum of understanding to update the prior one that you had with SBPF. We're working on that, we intended to have that draft provided to the board for consideration. It would definitely help the process if you had both a draft license in effect and the MOU prior to town meeting as well. You know, assuming Conservation Commission approval of the project, a robust set of conditions that protect the environment within the jurisdiction of the commission, and then some, you know, adequate, the memorandum of understanding and the proposed license agreement would certainly be good for you to have by then because then you have clarity as to what exactly, again, you're seeking approval from the town for. So that would definitely benefit that process and we're working on that.
Yeah, a couple of the questions, Vince, if I can.
You go.
Yeah. Do they, have they defined walkable beach and have they got removal triggers and are those all in the order?
The walkable beach has been discussed at length and it's going to be discussed again next Wednesday, the 15th, and hopefully that will be the date that it will be resolved. The hearings aren't complete and that is one of about three issues that are yet to be resolved. So it's on the cards.
And the removal triggers, have they figured, like, when it would, you know, walkable beach was the big one, but, you know, how do you define it is the tricky part?
I think there's about 70 points in the order of conditions, 72. There are many little triggers and many big triggers that are built into what constitutes failure. And it constantly uses the term failure as opposed to removal, just so that you're aware of that.
So just one last comment, or Tom, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
Just a very quick question for Vince. For 59 to 83, in general relative terms, what is the sense of urgency, say, compared to Reach One? And where the GeoTubes are?
Understood. So the best way I can explain this is myself and Leah Hill and Morgan Nelson within our department as well, we go out and take regular measurements at various points from the edge of the road to the edge of the bluff, beg your pardon. So when you're up in the north end, kind of 109, 107, down to about 85, you're kind of in the kind of 36 to 55 foot range from the edge of the road to the edge of the bluff. Once you get to about 83, 85, it starts expanding out and you kind of get into the more 100 foot range. As you get down towards the end of the bluff walk where it comes out onto Baxter Road, up by 65 Baxter Road, that's closer to 200 feet from the edge of the bluff to the edge of the road. So from there south, it's pretty much like that or bigger for a lot of that distance. Then there's the difference between where the homes are, the buildings are, to the edge of the bluff. A good number of the buildings, all in the north end and at points through 59 to 83 are under 40 feet. And that's one of the triggers that allows us to be able to say that we need GeoTubes and incidentally also core. But once you talk about effectiveness, that's where things get a bit tricky. But yes, there are houses that are under 40 feet in those areas as well and that's part of why we're looking at this for the GeoTubes. For the quayre, it kind of matches up as well because they're looking at the exact same area.
Okay, so I'm a little concerned about town meeting being able to suss out the project that we jointly filed with SBPF because it had shared benefit to the homeowners and the community and to the town and in terms of managing the road and access and all of that. I'm a little worried that if town meeting is asked to authorize the big thing or the small thing, a lot of people might think the small thing is the better choice because it's, just because it's smaller, without really being able to comprehend the more complex elements of this whole thing. So I think we should think about whether we want to even create the opportunity through this article for the small project to even have room to move forward, whether we want to preclude that to simplify the decision for town meeting. That's kind of where my head's at, I don't know how you all feel, but I don't, again, we're not going to probably just figure this out tonight. Stephen Cohen has his hand up, I'm assuming, to speak on behalf of SBPF. Would you guys like to hear what he has to say? Okay, Stephen, go ahead. Stephen, you need to, there you go.
Four.
There you go.
Okay, so I will try to keep you brief. One answer, why we're doing, why there's two applications is, like Vince said, the quayre tubing has been there for 20 years and it only needs an application because so much of it was destroyed, it's not considered maintenance anymore. And so that's why, but it's, but it's only an interim project with the goal of having it be replaced, you know, but the GeoTube project is a phased project. So the quayre would be there temporarily and then would be replaced by the GeoTubes. It's not a one or the other or both or whatever. But I understand we need to deal with that. I would not put that in the article now, but if we get closer to town meeting and it becomes necessary, it's easy to deal with it then. I think that the article is very well-written, it does exactly what I think we needed to do. Really, I think the only thing the town might want to think about is adding the words "subject to an order of conditions" so that town meeting can see that even granting the license is dependent on the Conservation Commission going first. So that's my recommendation, even though it limits it, I think it's a good limitation to put on there, "subject to an order of conditions."
Okay, thanks Stephen, appreciate that. And you were brief, appreciate that too.
Thank you.
Deanne Atherton's hands up?
Yes, thank you, Brooke, can you hear me?
I sure can, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Two points. The quayre installation, which covers a smaller area, is one notice of intent. The larger GeoTube expansion is a second notice of intent. Many citizens have never opposed the quayre because it's what's considered a soft installation. So it might be in everyone's best interest to separate the two and have two articles. One, which is approving the issuance of a license for the quayre if the commission grants a permit. And the second is to issue a license for the expanded GeoTubes if the commission issues a permit.
Okay, thank you.
Then my second point, Brooke, is I just want to point out, not only for the board, but for anyone who is viewing, that the current memorandum of understanding, which was renegotiated in March of 2022, called for the very first step for the current GeoTubes to be brought into compliance. And all the parties, including SBPF, agree to that. And that provision has not been met. So the current memorandum of understanding has not been fulfilled by SBPF and it's now January 2025.
Okay, thank you, Deanne.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
I just have one very quick question, which is, I guess it's to Vince or maybe Libby can ask this, or we might have already covered it, is, will the quayre rebuild? Will that decision by Concom be made before town meeting?
It's not beyond the bounds of possibility, there's a good chance that it would. They've had it in since, I think, March or so of 2023, sorry, beg your pardon, 2024. So it's in just about 10 months at this point. They've been continuing it more often than not, they have made presentations on it. But they're kind of watching to see what happens to the GeoTube first. But they have never withdrawn this one, they're continuing to pursue it and asking to have it included in this effectively, kind of as a backup of sorts, is what I'm guessing, but I don't know.
Thanks Vince.
I mean, I think that we should incorporate both and make, and add the language that it's dependent on whatever NOIs are issued. So it's all covered and it's still also subject to the license agreement with us and the maintenance.
I actually'd like to consider Deanne's suggestion and that way we can discuss them separately and describe them independently as an interim project and the long-term project that's, you know, and really have that a clearer conversation for town meeting if we're going to, if we're going to put the quayre log, include that as opposed to exclude it, which would be the alternative in my mind, is that we just go with the joint project, so.
I was going to suggest that too, because I think it could get too confusing.
Yeah, okay, so let's consider that. Dawn, did you want to? Make sense? So you'll, we'll keep discussing this? Yep, and maybe have it separate for the two. Or somehow delineate that there's two, I don't know.
So do we want to draft that? Have the two drafted and have them subject to the NOI approvals?
Yeah, I think the core would just be saying it's between, you know, 59 and 83 and it would have those numbers as opposed to this, the rest would probably be the same. Or it could delineate it's just core if we wanted to on that one, but, okay.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. Okay, so two articles for each project.
You know, I would maybe suggest somebody look at that issue a little bit. I mean, that's presenting some confusion. Is that other project needed? And then does somebody say, well, why are you approving the GeoTubes if you can do this core project? You know, I, I mean, I'll draft whatever you tell us to draft and I'll provide it to you, but they'll basically be the same article, except one will specifically refer to one project and one to the other and both can be made subject to whatever conditions, you know, are ordered by the commission. But putting two articles in certainly does not remove confusion, potential confusion over what exactly the town is authorizing and why. But, you know, again, whatever you tell me to do, I'll do.
There's a question for George, if I can?
Sure.
Is, is this article as written, since it encompasses both? Is it, would it allow us, because I would feel bad that that, not feel bad, that is the word, but I can, if that's, I can see where that should, I think that those core bags, like Deanne said, people have not opposed those, they've been there for 20 years, the property owner, you know, has paid for them, clearly needs them. I would not want to see those not be able to happen. And then, because we're going to argue about the GeoTubes and it's going to be whatever it's going to be and, you know, I think that, but that should happen. So if we could do it in one article, and you see what I'm saying, I don't know, what's the way to get that to happen?
Yeah, I do, and if that, I mean, if you're contemplating that, then yeah, that would make sense to have the two articles then. Because if you had just the one voted down for whatever reason and that particular project would have been approved by town meeting, then it would speak to a good reason to have two articles. But it's still raising confusion as, I mean, I'm confused as to actually why you have a project within the project area. You've always contemplated the GeoTube Expansion Project as described by Vince. And now to start talking about a second project within that project is inconsistent really with the way you've been proceeding on this. You've always been proceeding as a partner on that expansion project, which again includes resolution of the existing enforcement issues, which are substantial on the existing project. So it doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't reduce confusion, but it absolutely will be crucial if you want to leave the door open that you could get one approved and not the other, then definitely you would need the two articles. But it definitely, this topic would benefit from further discussion amongst the people involved in it and what exactly is going on with SBPF's filings.
Malcolm?
Yes, Madam Chair, after a great deal of thought, yes, it'd be confusion with two articles, but I have great fear like Matt that because of the lack of maintenance and the lack of enforcement and the lack of sand, whatever, there's a lot of skepticism about the GeoTubes and there's a high probability they will not get approved. And I would hate to see the logs not be approved. And why it's confusing, I think it's a way of separating and make sure at least that alternative method is used.
To me, it almost feels like my roof is leaking, I can't get someone to fix my roof, so I put a tarp over it temporarily until I can get someone to fix the roof. The GeoTube project is fixing the roof and the quayre logs is the canvas to cover my roof to keep my living room from getting wet, right? Because the timeline, that reach is down the road timeline-wise with the GeoTube project and they have a failed quayre log situation that is increasing their erosion. So they're saying, we're willing to fix it temporarily. And I think Stephen's use of the word interim, to me, is the way we need to describe this. It's a temporary fix till the big fix happens. Is that, Vince, I guess I'm asking you?
I see this differently, I'm sorry to say.
Go ahead.
Houses are a critical part of this, but one of the town's main interests is the road and the infrastructure in the road. And if you look where the road is closest to the edge of the bank, it's all north of 83, from 87 all the way up to 119, right up to the lighthouse. That's where the need is. And if you're putting a tarp on the part of your roof that's not leaking because it's 200 feet from the edge of the road to the edge of the bank, there's no benefit for the town. So it's a benefit to the people with houses, no question in that area. But if I'm looking for the town's interest in this, the GeoTubes and getting Reach One, which we've already had significant debate and the agreement that Reach One would be first, that's where the need is. It's the top area of Baxter Road, it's where it's skinny to the road. Like even think about the people on the other side of the road, not on the ocean side, on that landward side, just to keep access for those if there's a breach at 85 or 107. This has always been my strongest concern and the part of. This has always been my strongest concern and the part I shout about most. And the part about 107 being 36 feet from the edge of the road to the edge of the bluff and damn near vertical in winter, that's what terrifies me the most.
I don't want to belabor this too long. But then the question is, where does the money go first? Is the other part of this equation? The fundraising and the financing of a temporary versus a permanent solution, so.
If I may, SBP, you can ask Stephen this. SBPF have always said either project they're funding it, whether it be QUAR or geotubes. The town's contribution is partnership, guidance, and property, not finance.
No, I understand that. But in terms of their fundraising priorities, if there's a temporary project and a permanent project, where, how can we make sure the money's directed to the? Yeah, so there creates some confusion there as well. It's just another thought.
Yeah, and if you don't end up with an approved project north of 83, the town is getting no benefit from this. So that's just something to keep in mind. I mean, I definitely understand the concern. If, you know, you don't want to lose one that might get approved by the larger one. But you're looking at what the town's interests are and what policy you had previously determined on this, that you did want to save that portion of the roadway. And that was why you were willing to go through the steps that you had with SBPF. So, you know, you just have to, and when you're talking, Brooke, about money and where it's coming from, again, as Vince is pointing out, the benefit to the town is that north part of the project. And I love analogies that you're saying about the tarp. The tarp is needed, from your perspective, on the north part, not on the core part of the project, so.
Okay, Don?
I'm just thinking, this should mirror whatever CONCOM decides. And I feel like it should encompass the entire scope of whatever's approved, whether it's temporary or permanent. And not, because they wouldn't be precluded if it's not as dire of a situation in terms of the feet from the roadway from coming back at the next town meeting if the whole project wasn't voted on favorably. So I'm just thinking, I'm thinking we stick with it the way it is, subject to whatever NOI is approved, assuming that it could encompass both. And leave it to the fall town meeting, which we've already pretty much committed to. We haven't set a date yet, in case there's a failure to just go back for whatever the revised project is.
Well, it's really a strategy decision on our part. So why don't we table it for tonight? And we can think on it for a week and come back next week.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
It's a really tough one.
It's a, I look at it both ways. It's a tough one. I think, like, I support the geotubes, but I support them if there's, you know, guaranteed this sufficient sand and that the failure criteria is bulletproof and that we have leverage. It's not that we haven't had through this process. The town has to be in the driver's seat. And I think that if that's the case, then I think there is a very good chance it will pass. But I think if, but there are things, it's not gonna just be, my sense is, is not gonna just be what the CONCOM is, what they say, because they're gonna, I think they're gonna be leaving some things to us. You know, it sounded like, how are we gonna, you know, have an escrow and how much and whatever? I think some of those things are gonna get, is gonna be dumped on us. I think public access, et cetera, is gonna, you know, there's gonna be things like that that are gonna probably end up on our plate again. And I don't know how it's, in this timeframe, I don't know how it's gonna happen. You know, it's, but, you know, so there's a lot that we still have to do. You know, even when we get their decision, I think that there's gonna be some things that are gonna be forced on administration, on us, to deal with, unfortunately, so.
Stephen, last comment briefly?
I just want to say that one of the important reasons to protect the QUAR people who have had 20 years of production is because they're probably the people who are funding the other parts where there are no homes and where the town has the most interest. So by doing both, we protect the homes that create the money that protects the road. So, you know, we should just keep that in mind. And also, just to answer Matt's point about the requirements, one of the requirements is that the town, or is that SBPF annually present a contract with someone to provide all the sand. And the town could set an escrow associated with that contract so that that contract is there and the money is there and they don't have to worry about it. But that's already something in the draft order. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, more next week. Another interesting discussion. Libby, where are we?
Okay, the next one is just a general law acceptance for the seasonal community designation. And if you recall, we went kind of back and forth about this, but ended up being recommended to leave it in. Next is a citizen article, military service charter amendment, town meeting. That is a citizen article. Notices of public hearing is a citizen article. And then we get into home rule petitions. So if you recall, we were kind of waiting till the end of 2024 to see what was enacted. And a couple of things did get enacted. I'll take you through them, but not everything. And in the meantime, we have some information from Senator Sears' office recommending that the language in the introduction of the home rule petitions be sort of, John, you can help me with this, but less specific as to if the home rule petition is approved by town meeting, sometimes there are language changes. And most of our home rule petitions are written that those language changes go back or required to get the approval of the select board. And Senator Sears is suggesting, take that out so that it's easier for the general court to amend the home rule petitions if needed, hopefully non-substantively, but legally or whatever, so that we don't have to go through that particular process. Is that about it, John, or is it something different?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good summary. He presented three options, one of which was not to allow any changes whatsoever. And of course, we would not recommend that because that would be a reason for the general court not to enact what was voted on at town meeting. Because a lot of these wind up being citizen petitions. And I personally think you need the flexibility to allow changes. But I think they should come back to the select board. So my recommendation is you leave the language as it is in Article 78 that allows constructive changes within the intent of the legislation, subject to the approval of the select board, as opposed to just allowing the general court to make any changes they deem appropriate without coming back. Because coming back to the select board gives us the opportunity to weigh in and say, no, that's not gonna work for this reason, or yes, that's fine. It maintains local control. And so I would recommend we keep this language as we have traditionally approved at town meeting. But that really is a policy question for the select board to decide.
I agree with John.
Yeah.
What if the state says, you know, that they want half the fee? Yeah, we'll approve this, but half goes to us, you know? That we should, you know, that's an extreme example. But I think that that's, that we want to make sure that we can just say, well, we don't want to do that. Then the fall money's gonna go to them, so.
And the other, I'll give you an example, Matt, of where coming back to the select board was beneficial. And that had to do with the citizen petitioned article that changed the makeup of the Planning Commission. And that was a citizen petition. It had, I think even the petitioner would agree that there was some rough language in the petition as it was filed with the town clerk and enacted by town meeting. Senate council did a wholesale revision of that home rule petition to sort of fix some of the glaring interpretation issues. That came back to the board. The board approved it. We now have a home rule petition that even though it was submitted by citizen petition, meets the requirements for legislation, let me put it that way. So that was a good example of where it worked well. I'm not aware of any circumstance where the select board has not approved changes by the legislature. But I don't think you want to give up that option. Because after all, this is a home rule issue.
Okay, Hillary, report has her hand up, I'm gonna.
Yes, hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, oh, okay, thank you. So, you know, I think this just adds time. I just wanted to share, since the article, in the process of amending the article that I sponsored was raised by Mr. Giorgio. My own experience as a petitioner and lead sponsor was that Senator Sears' office was in close touch about any review of the article, the petition that came to them. They put everything through the Senate council. They asked for a transcript of the town meeting debate. They mentioned multiple times that they had to be very careful that whatever was submitted accurately reflected the understanding of town meeting. And I ended up being totally confident that what was happening was that they were just putting something in a format that would be suitable for the senators and the representatives to consider. And that there was absolutely nothing substantive. It just echoed exactly what we said. And the, you know, the coming back, because there was so much attention on this article, it ended up, you know, the planning board objected to the certification. And it actually did add a lot of time and stress. So that was my experience. I felt that they were following the law and they couldn't introduce anything in terms of a home rule petition that didn't exactly follow town meeting's vote and the petition as submitted on the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question for John, if I could. So is Hillary right, John, that they, that the legislation can't, that legislators can't make changes that weren't there? Is that true? Like, the example I gave, would they be able to take half the money? They have to follow what was there, that what we sent to them?
So Matt, I would say that if you look at Article 79 that's up on the screen, it says, "The court can make constructive changes in the text there to as may be necessary or advisable in order to accomplish the intent of the legislation." So I'm not sure that the example you gave, I would be very, very, very shocked and surprised if the, if the general court made that kind of a change.
That would be too far.
I think that, I don't think that would be within the intent of the legislation. And we could, we have the ability with this language to say to the general court, no, that goes beyond the intent. So I do think this language, as it appears in Article 79, is certainly what I would recommend you keep.
Okay, thanks.
Tom?
Yeah, I completely agree with John and Matt's comments on this. And Matt, I know you're coming up with an extreme example on the fly. And but in my time in working for the reps office, the legislature has 8,000 bills in a given legislative session. They are not looking to go to, into a home rule petition and to change it and say, oh, Nantucket should do X, Y, or Z. But I also agree with John on his point on, it ties into the whole purpose of the home rule petitions and home rule in general for how, for how our system of government works. And I don't think we should give that up. And I also think it's a good time for when we send up a home rule petition and then House or Senate council sends it back and says, you should make these changes, for us to see what those changes are and to evaluate that and then to send it back up or not. And I agree with, certainly, I've, I've never seen that. And to see whether that's, we want to send it back or not.
We, basically, we reserve the right to assess their interpretation of town meeting's intent here at the local level.
Correct.
Yep, okay, great. So, moving on?
So I'm hearing we are not interested in the language recommended by, okay. So this particular home rule petition is for the Community Housing Bank Real Estate Transfer Fee. And I think we were originally hoping that the Affordable Homes Act might have a transfer fee that we could opt into, but that ended up not being the case. So I know of no changes to this home rule petition, John. I don't know if you know of any, but it would, if you all are agreeable, it would go back in as is.
Yep.
Okay. So the next article, which shows a strikeout, because I just wanted you to see what had been made, has, is amendments to the Nantucket Sewer Act, and this goes back a couple of years now, several years, has passed the legislature, but it has not been enacted by the governor yet as of today. So we don't see any reason why the governor would not enact it. But just in case, I've left it stricken here. So I will totally strike it if the governor has enacted it, because then we won't need it anymore. Same thing goes for Article, what's known, what's listed there is Article 82, which is a home rule petition to amend the charter from recommendations from the former town government study committee. There are numerous recommendations here. And if it's been enacted through the governor's office, then we don't need to have it here. But John, I did have that question about whether or not there's a ballot, an associated ballot question?
There is not.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a, this is a home rule petition. And so it doesn't require a ballot question unless the legislature adds it. And it does not appear they've added it here. So you don't need to worry about that.
Okay, well, I just put it in exactly as it was, has been approved. So I didn't even look at the home rule petition that passed. I'm assuming that we would have known if they made a change to it.
Right.
Okay, Article 83 is a home rule petition. Again, we've had this numerous times. It's most likely not expected to pass, but we keep putting it in. It's the fertilizer regulation. John, I don't know if you want to re-explain this, but.
Libby, it was a limited, targeted attempt to give the town more time to, you know, the state had established in the Fertilizer Act a deadline for local regulation. And this home rule petition seeks to extend that deadline that would allow the town to do some local regulation. It, when it was, I'm not sure when this was first enacted or passed by town meeting, but it was referred to the Committee on Environment. And that's, I hate to put it this way, but that's sort of a death knell, meaning that's where bills oftentimes go to die when it's just referred to committee. And nothing has changed on this for quite some time. So sure, we can leave this on, pass it again. I'm not sure it's gonna meet any different fate than what's already happened, however.
I would be inclined, given the advice from Senator Sears, that we have a lot of competing home rule petition priorities that if this is likely to go nowhere, perhaps we should pull it off and give it a break and then maybe get some other communities to, to, if it's, you know, maybe there's a way to rally some other Cape communities to go in with home rules, a bunch of towns at the same time. John, are you aware of any other towns that are trying to do that?
Yes, I am. I believe Orleans has passed, it's a similar kind of home rule petition. It hasn't gone anywhere. I think Harwich voted something as well. I may be wrong about that. But it's gonna take a concerted effort by a number of towns to try to get this passed.
Yeah, we gotta create some political will.
Right.
The issue, if we pull it though, is then, you know, we're asking how many are there? And there's one or two there. If we pull it, the other people are looking and are gonna say, oh, there's one less. So it can't, you know, there is some, they're probably gonna just take it and say, oh, it's still here, you know? And, but at least it's there so other people can look. I don't know. I don't know.
If you would want my advice?
Sure.
I would leave it on. It doesn't hurt. It doesn't hurt. And, you know, it, it's a continued expression of the will of town meeting, and that, that's important. Even if it goes nowhere, I think to have it voted on at town meeting sends a message that could be helpful in the future.
Okay. If some momentum builds up there, maybe.
Yep.
Okay. The next one relates to the issuance, it's a home rule petition, issuance of pension obligation, bonds, and notes. We're just waiting for that to pass. That's in there exactly the same as it has been. The article, next one that's shown with stricken language, that has actually passed and been enacted, so I'm going to take that out. That's good news. The next one is a home rule petition conveying school street from the county to the town. That has not, nothing has happened so far with that. The next one is conveyances from the town to the land bank and, and/or the Wisconsin Trust. Like, we'll probably leave that in because nothing has happened with that. And then we have the gender neutral home rule petition, which also, surprisingly, I thought that would be so simple just to approve it, but it hasn't gone anywhere, so that will just go back in as is. And then we're getting into real estate. So the first item here is a new article. It came in late. It is from the Nantucket Education Trust to seek a, a authorization for a long-term lease for property that is town-owned for additional school housing. It's, it's basically an extension of their existing project into other property. I don't think there's much more to that. I have a note there because it specifically states non-year-round housing for Nantucket Public School staff. And I had a comment, "What about other town staff if units are available?" We don't want the language to be too overly restrictive. And I only bring it up because there have been times when the existing housing at Cow Pond has not had school-related tenants. And they've gone to the town, and we have filled them from time to time, and sometimes there hasn't even been, no, I'm talking, several years ago.
Yeah, you were going to say early years.
Yeah, the earlier years. And there, they've even rented it to non-town or school entirely. I don't think that's been very often, but there, there has been a little bit of that. So I, I just wouldn't want to go out to the general public, but offer the opportunity, at least if there are no school-related staff that are jumping to go in there, could there be the opportunity to offer it to the town? So I just didn't want to make it totally exclusive like that. So I don't know if anybody is on as an attendee on this. I discussed this with the superintendent earlier today and said, "I didn't really think this was going to be a problem with the board," but I'm not sure she and I talked very specifically about this wording.
Well, it's just an authorization for us to execute, at least. It doesn't obligate us to execute it, right? So we can talk about the details.
Yes. I just would want to make sure that nobody says, "Well, but the authorization was for the Nantucket Public School staff only."
Oh, no. I think, yeah, we should ask for that change.
Arthur Reed.
Arthur?
Thanks very much. Yes, I'm representing the Nantucket Education Trust, and obviously, which is specifically a nonprofit educational organization. And as such, the purpose of this is to provide housing for school department employees. It's obviously on the property that's used by the school, town-owned property, obviously used for the school, and we think that its location immediately adjacent to the school is specifically appropriate for school department employees. And I expect that the permitting on this will be based upon its being used for the educational purposes of the organization. I agree that the exact terms of this can be worked out in the lease, but that, and, and obviously, if the property were not able to be used in any other way, yes, it would be appropriate for others to be able to use it, but that would only be in a circumstance in which there, there was no need for the property, no request of use for the property by school department employees.
I think, Arthur, we're talking about if there's a unit vacant and there's no school department employee who's interested in occupying that unit, that we make sure the language allows for it to be leased to a non-school, other town employee or other person, you know, in sort of a stepwise priority to make sure that there's not a financial burden of, of NET having to bear a vacant unit.
Yeah, obviously, you don't have a vacant unit, but, but that would only come up in the event that there was no school department employee, whether it be teacher, administrator, or staff that would be able to use the unit.
Yeah. What we're saying is we just want to make sure that language does not preclude us from allowing that in the lease. So, yeah. So I, Hadley, she's from NET. Hadley, thank you, Arthur.
Thank you for having me. I'm, I'm happy to be on the president of the Nantucket Education Trust. I think we're all saying the same thing. So currently, we have land that we lease, that the town has leased to us for 99 years, where we built the 12 existing units for teachers on Cow Pond Lane. And what we'd like to do is just replicate that same model in the property immediately adjacent to the existing one. And right now, our bylaws state that if the units are not filled by teachers and administrators and NPS staff, we do open those units to town employees and hospital, hospital employees, which we had to do, frankly, during the recession. Right now, every unit is occupied by teachers and administrators, so I think we're all saying the same thing, that primarily the units would serve NPS staff, but in the event that we couldn't fill them with an NPS staff member, we would open it to town or hospital employees. Certainly.
Thank you, Hadley. I, I think we're all on the same page. We just want to make sure the language allows for that in the, in the warrant article. That's all we're talking about tonight, so.
So, John, maybe you can take a look at it later and make sure that the language, as submitted, will allow the, for the circumstance that we just talked about, which we are all in agreement on.
Libby, I think it would, based upon the, if you can just scroll up a tiny bit, based upon the language that allows, authorizes the select board to establish the terms and conditions. I think if there's no need for a unit, there's no demand by the school department, I think the lease can certainly allow for other town employees to occupy that unit in those circumstances. I, I think this language is fine.
Okay. Great. The next several articles are, were on your list previously. They're all utility easements over town-owned property. The first one has to do with 10 Sun Island Road for the airport housing. The second one relates to a couple of other airport properties or items that need to cross town property for airport purposes. There's one for 16 Broad Street at the town building, was for some electrical work that needs to be done in the area. And Wait Drive for our housing project, which we did a license for some time ago. There are a couple of outstanding real estate articles that I'm still waiting for a little bit of clarification on. One is to do with Newtown Cemetery and whether or not we need a warrant article or articles to designate the land that is actually being used as the cemetery formally for a cemetery. Apparently, there is some question about that, although it should be a no-brainer to just approve that. There was, you may have seen some correspondence that came in about the potential for an authorization for the select board to grant an easement for neighboring property owner to the Noshop Sewer Pump Station. That, that raised a lot of questions. And the representative for that group and I communicated today, and that, that is basically withdrawn so that those questions can be answered and perhaps would be resubmitted for the special in the fall. And then I just had a little question about the easement authorization for the, for national grid for the airport sewer pump station, but I think that got combined with a different article. Seven Amelia Drive is a long-term lease authorization. That is town-owned property, and the Affordable Housing Trust, I believe, is seeking to enter into a long-term lease there, but we didn't realize sort of elatedly, I guess, that we didn't actually have town meeting authorization for that. So that's just for that purpose. And then we have a citizen article, and then the usual annual articles for the stabilization fund and free cash, and then just keep going a little bit to get to the election warrant.
Sorry. Does this still need to be in? This was part of a citizen warrant article. So I think we can...
I, I had no idea.
Yeah. So this was, this was an attachment to a citizen warrant article, so I think we can take this out.
Okay. The election ballot, we just need to update the election of, the officers that, and offices that are going to be up for election in, in the spring. And then we have the companion articles for the debt exclusions, the public works facility design supplemental funding, the Island Home. I need to get in here, Brian, I guess. I forgot to put in the town employee housing feasibility study. That's a debt exclusion, right? What's that?
The Wait Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just need to add the one, we, we talked about it earlier, it just needs a companion ballot question. And we will most likely have some capital outlay exclusions for capital purchase, projects, purchases, mostly purchases like vehicles and equipment and things like that, that will be coming forward as recommendations from the Capcom. And that highlighted charter amendment thing, we can ignore because John just answered that. And then we have our non-binding public opinion ballot, ballot question, which mimics the non-binding warrant article from earlier and has the same minor modifications that we reviewed earlier. And that is it. So I have a little homework to do from your discussion tonight, and you'll have an updated document for next week. And we'll see about getting the planning staff in here to review with you the zoning article updates.
One, a quick question if I can. Is the, is the NPDC home rule petition, you know, the citizens' article from Hillary, is that still, is that on or are we not putting that on because we don't need to?
Well, you previously agreed not to include it, and it, and it hadn't been filed yet before the end of the legislative session, so my understanding is that it most likely will be filed in the new session, so it didn't really need to come back anyway.
Okay. Because I, I was reminded in the minutes it talked about, Don and I wanted to try to broker something and not, and I have only one. And my question, Don, would be, "Should we do that or who should do that and how do we do that?" Because we really should solve this, you know? Anyway. Does anyone have any answers to that?
I got distracted for a second trying to remember something.
The NPDC rep now, so I think it would be who, who has an appetite for coming to a compromise on this.
Oh, okay. No wonder I was not paying attention.
I think we do.
I was trying to avoid, I was trying to avoid the topic. Apparently, my subconscious was screaming. So, so the vice chair and I talked about this in the agenda meeting, and, and I, I did agree to try to have some conversations with the parties and see if there was a path forward to suggesting a compromise. My, my sense is there may not be an appetite at the NPDC, but we'll see. I'll make some, you know, I'll, I'll see what I can do to see if there's another round. At this point, it looks like it's going to be a competing conversation at the, on the home rule when it gets filed.
Yeah, I think that's a shame. I, I, sorry, you can go, Don.
Oh, I was going to basically say the same thing. I think it's really unfortunate that this can't be figured out to be the, the best change for the community. And I, I see ways that both sides could compromise and come together. There are some similarities, and I think there's a few sticking points that should be able to be debated out.
Malcolm?
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Matt, for bringing that up. I, for one, originally kind of thought to let things alone because we did have two town meeting votes to support a Hillary's warrant, but, but may, maybe there's a chance now. I think maybe some of the parties have proposed some possible compromises, and I would certainly encourage, encourage the chair and the vice chair to look into that.
So my understanding is that the, the home rule will be filed, it will be converted into a bill. It is not subject to the January, the end of January deadline that normal bills are subject to. So there's time before the, the bill is filed. Any substantive changes would have to come back to town meeting. That is clear. So really, there is no clear path to any version passing at this point, in my understanding, as I've been advised by our representatives, that, that, you know, the general court will look at a town meeting vote, the commission's opinion, testimony from community members, and, and home rule petitions really have a less clear path of passing if the message from the petitioning town is muddied, as it is in this case, clearly, and will be under the current circumstances. So neither version has much chance of passing, honestly, given that perspective that I've gotten. So I will say here publicly that I think a compromise is the best way to go, and we'll see if something can be forged.
And then my earlier question of how, how does that happen? You know, that's the, you know, that's the question, the million-dollar question, but...
Well, we can build a table and we can invite people to it and see what happens.
Madam Chair, just say quickly that, like I said before, in a legislative session, there's 8,000 bills, and there's very limited bandwidth, and we have other priorities and home rule petitions, et cetera, at the State House. And the legislature is not going to look kindly on us hashing out our business up there. So, yeah, I, I agree with everything you just said.
So we'll leave that as the...
Yeah. Madam Chair, I guess there's not, well, no, I, I get the sense of the board, so I'm, it's up to you.
Okay. I'll, I'll do my best if I can.
Yeah, because I, I, I think we could build, we could do something on our own, but I, I don't have a sense that we'd have the whole board supporting that.
Let's, let's see, let's see what happens in the next month or two, and then, okay. So that's it? Thank you. Committee reports.
I, I would just mention that everything is moving forward with Island Home and talking about public outreach and fundraising and so forth, so forth, different opportunities for that, working in conjunction with Friends of Our Island Home. And Capital Program Committee has a draft report, so that will be coming, I think, towards the end of the month.
So have you left that one? I wanted to add that the Washington Street Collaborative Work Group has some outreach events on the project at Francis Street Beach that are scheduled for Monday, the 13th, at 5:30 PM and/or 9:00 AM on the 15th. And they are virtual, and if you go to the Washington Street Work Group page on the town website, you can get registration information. And it will be an opportunity for folks to see what's, how the development of the planning for that is coming and to, and to offer input into the project as it progresses along. So we didn't have that announcement, so I'll add that.
Right. And I was going to say something about a seminar, a planning seminar I went to, but you just gave me a great opportunity with this, is I think what we're trying to do with the Washington Street Work Group is adopt a planning process with the Washington Street Work Group is adopt a planning process where we are bringing the public and the, and the parties in multiple times. It's not 100%. We're not jamming it down people's throat. We're not telling them what to think or how to do it. We're, you know, including them in an inclusive process that, you know, and improving the project as we go with some of the neighbors and some of the public. It is, you know, people, it's going to be, it's, some of these things we're going to have to do are going to be change, and it's, people, you know, we hesitate, we don't like change, and we fight against it, but I think, you know, that's not going to slow some of the things we have to do. You know, the water's not going to slow down, it's still going to come. You know, if we want to use that street and we want to keep that neighborhood as resilient and for as long as possible, these are the types of things we have to do. And I think that, you know, it, it may not happen immediately, but we're getting there. And so hopefully this, people will attend and, and hopefully we will, you know, show that there's a way to do it. So when the time comes to vote on it at, you know, at town meeting and everything, all those questions will be answered and it will be a, an easy, it will not an easy vote, but hopefully it won't be, you know, oh, you didn't include us and all the other things we have every time. And it's what, what we're doing is, I went to, I attended a seminar online, and this is what they were basically saying, is you do all these things and you have so much public meetings and so many, so much input, and you do it that way, that by, you know, at the, if you do it right, at the end, the vote is an easy part. And what we've, unfortunately, what we've been doing lately, because we're sort of scrambling a lot of times, is we're trying, we're hashing out stuff on town meeting floor or up in Boston or wherever that should have been worked out over many other times prior. And so hopefully this, people will attend and we will be able to move this forward in a positive manner. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would say that the point of input here is between, so there's some preliminary design work, so there's something really to look at and envision and give input to. So it's not this conversation, it's been narrowed, and we're moving it toward narrowing further to go into more final design and then be able to bid it out and, and figure out how to pay for it. So, anyway, it's a great process, please attend. If nothing else, anyone want to go home?
Motion to adjourn.
By roll call, Don?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Adjourned. That's an aye from me. Have a good night, everybody.